They had car trouble, so we're at home today. But thank you Frank for joining us. This, this I think officially qualifies as a tradition at this point. I believe this may be the third time you've come to walk us through town meeting warrant. And greatly appreciate it, not only for those of us that are town meeting members, but interested town meeting residents, so I mean town residents. So let's see, as much for my benefit as anything else, let's, let's do the introductions because I want to see who's in the room. Why don't we, we start with folks that are there at that Metro Works. Want to just go around and introduce yourselves quickly?
Back with Kerry, that's right next to you.
Sure, yeah. Good morning all, Kerry Buckhill, yes, town meeting member, precinct eight, concerned environmentalist, but.
Okay.
Catherine Coughlin, precinct two, town meeting member and select board.
Frank Ross, town moderator.
No, Ramech, former town meeting member.
And what, Yaren Kessel, town meeting member, precinct ten, and kind of also handle the technology for this, this meeting.
Kathleen Donovan, precinct six.
Hi, Jeanette Sreder, precinct four.
Pat Conaway. Keep maybe good.
All right. And thanks also to Catherine for, for bringing the food that I see that you're all enjoying there. And remote, let's see, Elaine.
To be with the activist, Josh's mother.
Brian.
Good morning, Brian McPherson, town meeting member, working with Pat with Keep Natick Beautiful, environmental concerns.
Thanks, Carol. You're on mute, Carol. There you go.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, everybody. Carol Berkowitz, town meeting member, been a resident of Natick over fifty years.
Thanks, Carol. Chris?
Hi, I'm Chris Gentry, Natick resident, just looking to get more involved and understand, knowledgeable about what's going on.
Thanks, Chris. Deborah?
Greetings, everyone. Deb Mitchell, town meeting member, precinct number two, and the president of a very own Natick for Black Lives Matter.
Excellent, thanks, Deb. Sally?
Good morning, Sally Hopkins. Just eager to hear what all these town me, all you town meeting folks do and think about. I'm Pat Conaway's sister, so I'm part of Keep Natick Beautiful, of course. Thank you.
Thanks, Sally, and Cindy? You're on mute, Cindy. Yeah. There you go.
Four-year resident of, of Natick, and transferred for the Takalame Trail. And sometimes looking, picking up later at Coolidge Shield. And just back last night at ten o'clock from a ten-day camping road trip to Cincinnati and back.
Wow.
Nice.
Very cool.
Fabulous.
Well, we might have to do one of our trip coffee with purposes and hear all about it. All right, thanks, everybody, for introducing yourselves. And Frank, I will turn it over to you again. Thanks for being with us this morning, albeit early for your day, I, I think you were saying, so.
As a rule, yes. I'm, I'm spilling my first cup of coffee usually by now and watching the morning news and, you know, trying to wake up. I tend to be a night owl, I get, get my better work done then. But that's okay. Morning is morning and I used to get up at three thirty in the morning, and those are the old days, really quick. Those are long gone. But we're not here to talk about me, thank you, Paul, me waking up, I'm fine.
On that note, cue the coffee.
Timing is everything.
Have a job too, some.
I'll take a slur.
The Arnold Station will be out shortly.
Follow and do some stuff yet. Well, we're here to talk about town meetings. It's a couple of weeks away. That's the seventeenth, and it starts at seven thirty in the, the high school. And the select board signed the warrant sixty days ago or so.
Roughly, yeah.
Roughly a couple of months ago. And the finance committee has been doing all their deliberation and select board or the planning board have just heard, at least the first time, most of the articles. And they've made recommendations. So now here we are, where we're trying to figure out what does all this mean? So at least my part in town meeting is pretty, kind of neutral. I really don't get into the, the substance of, of the articles so much as I try and make certain that I understand what the, the, the scope of them are and that they've received appropriately so that the attorney general or some other authority doesn't kick it back at us for an idea. Or that it actually gets, gets through to all of the checks and balances that it, it goes through the riggers that some go through after it leaves town meeting. So that's, that's my whole process. But I do have to understand what is going on. And that gets us to the warrant. And the warrant has thirty-six articles on it. Everybody understands what a warrant is, warrant are, are is the agenda for town meeting. It essentially has a list of questions that are going to be asked of town meeting members. And they will decide motions, which are basically questions that they want to vote under each of these articles. So the substances is really interesting this year. It has, there's a plethora of topics, there's, there's no one leaning, you know, towards zoning bylaws or finance or whatever. There's a lot of everything. So this year, last fall, we had, I think we had like ten or twelve articles that were in the consent agenda. Right now, I can only find six that, that fit into the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is, for those that haven't been to town meeting, it, it's a, it's a tactic. It's a, it's a way to get through, a way to process articles in a lump, meaning to say we take five or six or even ten or twelve, and we just vote them through. So we have no unpaid bills, which is article four. Article six is the PEG access funding, which we have to authorize anyway. There's no choice of that. And then there are six, oh, four zoning articles, which could go on the consent agenda for one reason or another. One is kind of, kind of in question because I think the sponsor wants to speak to it, even though there can't be any action taken on it for one reason or another. So it may be five, it may be six. That really leaves us with a lot of work. And a lot of work on things that, oh, you know, some of these I might just pass by as, as this is, you know, what we do every year. But there are some here that we do every year that are pretty complicated. And we'll probably raise some questions. So I, I hope you take the time, you town meeting members or residents, take the time to read the finance committee recommendation book. Take the time to listen, if you have time, listen to the select board meeting when you, when they went through certain articles. Planning would for sure on the zoning articles so that you understand them. And the finance committee hears everything anyway. But you certainly want to hear what the town administrator, actually is going to present tomorrow night, I believe, to the FinCom and all the financial articles. I think the select board's already heard the update on the, let's say, the financial position of the town.
Yes.
You did get a report.
We got a report and we're waiting for cash, free cash to be certified.
Yeah, I gotta strongly urge that people listen to that report. Because it was done very clearly, it was very, and it's very helpful for understanding why we, we may or may not even do anything too much under this, this warrant. So, okay, let's get into the actual articles so we can understand what's going on.
Hey Frank, if I could ask just one question upfront, when is it that the finance recommendation book typically comes out? Because I know that also has a lot of detailed discussion of each article as well.
It does. It has to be in the hands of town meeting members, it's seven days before town meeting. It used to be ten, it's now seven. And I have been told by the chair that I have to have all my information to her by, by the third. So between the third and the seventh is when they will print, produce and mail out all of the books. We should expect it by then.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes, the copies will be either at the select, select board office, town clerk, or they also leave, put it up online. I urge, I use the online version. And oftentimes the library, if I'm a copy club, because we need some quiet time, you can sit down and read it there and not take a huge book haul. You're welcome.
Great question, Frank. I would say the online version too gets updated with all the memos and the updates, so people following along. If you go to the Natick N A website, right, the town meeting tab, that's where all the information will continue.
And if you want to dig even deeper, and I do this to get even more of the common variant, some of the, the, the ins and outs. As I go to the, what they call the finance committee questionnaire. And that's a document that's filed before the, the, the finance committee appears it, and they attach it to their agenda. And it gives the perspective of the person who was sponsoring the article, what they're asked, what they think they're asking. So it's good to get, okay, here's what there, what, what, what it reads like. Here's what the person that actually is thinking, what they want to do, you know, get out of it. And then how it morphs sometimes into what the finance committee thinks is, is correct. Or, you know, legal counsel gives us the advice that you can or can't do something. And it's amazing to see that how it tracks out, but that's a great resource to.
Is the FinCom committee, what's the last word?
Committee, finance committee agenda.
Agenda, yeah.
Is that online as well with the questionnaires?
It is.
Thank you.
Yeah, they usually leave a link when they're reviewing each of the articles. Not always, but more often than not, and that questionnaire is attached. We all have the, the warrant in front of you. Here's your thirty-three articles. We start from the top and go right to the, the last item unless town meeting tells us we're going to take them out of order. So that happens often. And I'm actually going to ask some town meeting members if they, they make some motions, and I'll warn you about this right now. We want to take the financial articles first, get them done. So the town administration can then do what they need to plan and get ready for when, when these things are finally authorized. So that's the first night. The second night is, is going to be either zoning or charter and bylaw review, we're, we're not quite sure which, which it's going to be. But one of the two things are going to come up the second night. The third night, we're going to have that up, whatever doesn't come up the second night. And then the fourth night, we're going to do all the citizen petitions. Because there's seven citizen petitions this time, and they will take time. They always do. So we're going to try and break the nights up into blocks. And you know what, I didn't say we're only going to meet four times. I'm not going to jinx us, but at least that's the plan.
Hold it to it.
Don't hold me to it because it will likely run long, especially this year. So the committee article, article one, we usually bundle in into the first night. And that's, that's when the reports occur from, like the Solon House, you know. All, well, they are actually going to give a report. The conservation commission might give a report that. The charter and bylaw review committee could give a report, but they opted to have their separate article in case they wanted to do something, make some other adjustments to their special counsel findings, which they're not, but that, that's what they did in September. Why, oh, I see. Then if there's any other people that want to have, give a report, that is to say, a multi-dumper board, an officer of the town, or some agency of the town. They will usually let me know forty-eight hours in advance. And I'll alert town meeting members that it's coming through the emails I sent out. And they will give a report, they're all hopefully limited to ten minutes. Sometimes they run a little long some odd, but it's, it's informative to hear what's going on, especially the committees that town meeting points. That's what it's for, essentially. Article two is probably, in my opinion, the most important article, that is, that is the omnibus budget. There's a time and a place to make adjustments to what the town meeting did for a budget in the spring. Because we now know more about revenues. Catherine mentioned that we now know, I think, call, growth, the growth numbers could be more clear or clearer, may, may be certified, hopefully. So all those things that we didn't know in the spring, which were a little blurry, become clearer come, come fall. We, we may, we may not have free cash, but at least we'll have some sense of what was filed. And we can move forward with some plan. And I think there were some minor changes that the town administrator mentioned when I did the town meeting primer show, which we'll be showing next week. So that's another source of information. Boy, it's going to be a repeat of what I'm saying today. Article three, there may be some rescissions of, of authorizations of bonding that it was either unspent, approved and borrowed and unspent, or something, one or two things that maybe changed from the way they were actually originally authorized. That's what article two is for, oh, excuse me, article three. Article four, as I said, there's no unpaid bills. So that will be in the consent agenda. Stabilization funds. We have three funds and one trust. We have the general fund, we have, which would be, I call it a rainy day fund. Then we have the capital fund, we have the Obed Fund, and what's fourth when I'm drawing a blank? Trust me, we have one. Each one of these town meeting has to vote, put funds into. And it takes a two-thirds vote, this is, this is not taking money out, it's putting money, only putting money in. So this is like our savings accounts. This is, this is like if we have, you know, a capital account, we're in business, we've got capital accounts, we want to separate our capital money from our operating cash. That's what, that's what these things do. And they assist with, at least in many cases, showing the rating companies, our bond rating companies, how well we're planning and using our funds. Rather than having a one big general fund, we, we have a plan, play it out where our cash is, where our assets are. So that's what the stabilization fund is good for. PEG access and cable-related funds, cable companies all collect from whoever has a cable subscription, five percent of their revenues are what you pay. And that is paid to the town. In addition, it makes usually annual or quarterly capital payments that are only supposed to be used for public access, and that's our local channels. That money by law has to go into special account. It is then dispersed with, consistent with the contract that the select board has with the PEG access company organization, which is Pegasus, we know that, is Pegasus. And that's how the money stream goes. It used to be very loose and, and a little awkward, having spent twenty-three years in the cable industry professionally. And it's very hard to find where that money went. Sometimes it didn't go in the right places. So this was one way that the state, as well as the, looks like business, started to solidify and be clearer in how towns dealt with this money. Which is a good thing. Capital equipment improvements. We used to have three articles and to do what we do under this one article, we now have one. So if we lease something like a car, if we improve our, any vehicle, or if we buy a new vehicle, for an example, those three things would happen under article seven. This also can include road improvements, infrastructure improvements, all kinds of things. It can also do water, water projects, things that are not necessarily funded from the general funds of the stabilization ones, but from the actual funds that people, the, from the rates that people pay that go into the revolving funds for like the golf course or the swim water.
So the rough idea is to what percent that typically is the capitalization?
Yeah, it, this, it's, I asked that question early on. It's about sixteen million that we're carrying in debt. In this case, it's about a quarter of that being appropriated. So with the rollover of the debt, that's our debt quantity, and it runs around to three to four million each year that we're borrowing or expending for capital purposes. And a lot of it, a lot of this is funded from really three sources, like alluded to one borrowing, free cash and stabilization funds. Or any grants that we need to approve through town meeting. Not all grants are approved. Somewhere as well. This one actually was very, the next one was very interesting articulating. It's the prudent investor rule. And I asked the question of the town administrator, does that mean we haven't been prudent? And he said, no. I guess this gives, and this is my words, this gives more latitude to our fiduciary agent to do, to invest money more than we have allowed them so far. And it accepts the, the jet chapter two, two oh three C as the kind of like to do so. Beyond that, we have my, my.
Raising interest rates are helping that a little bit.
Yeah, and, and you I would like to have, you know, an investor fiduciary that, that I can leave alone because they know their business better than, and I want my own property, and I wanted to do that and focus on that. And I'm glad that our, we have the, you know, the skilled people helping us as contractors. And it seemed to be doing a very good job. You would know Catherine better than all of us. I've heard no, no complaints about the investments.
That adopting chapter, chapter two or three C also provides for compliance. There's a compliance aspect to it, so it's, it's.
That the GASP or Obed? Gas, GASP is a new standard that we're supposed to follow.
I don't.
Yeah, it, it may be because of that. See, that's going over my head. Now, the next one is, is a grant that was given, I believe, and it's through the federal and, and I think it was federal grants, the settlement with the pharma, pharma, as well as some of the distribution, like CVS and some of the other pharmacies with regards to opioids. And I guess many, many millions of dollars was collected on this nationally, and it's finally getting to Natick. And it's finally going to focus on problem that every community has, that we've been, we've been, we've been very active with it. We've done a good job, but anybody can do better. If we save one life, we've, we've saved many. So this, this money goes for those purposes. And I think there's a reporting, I don't know if you, you heard about that, Catherine, but this is not just give the money and, and go. It's, it's a partnership with the local organization, but the town still has report, need to.
Yeah. Record all its benefits. Spent, yeah.
Yeah. So I think there is.
Will that go to Natick one eighty and the health?
I would assume so, yeah. I, it's a great question for, for, um, select board member. Or the town administrator.
People got a lock on it. That's the intention. Find support from Brandon.
Good.
Potentially another.
Actually, these guys know.
Excuse me, and just to clarify, when you say it's up, where is it up?
It goes to the federal government, the, the, or the trustee that's overseeing, there's a federal trustee overseeing distribution.
I understand that, the report you said about Natick's usage of it, you said there was a report posted.
Oh, it hasn't been posted yet because we haven't used it yet. But what we'll, what we'll do is when, when the money is used, then we'll post it.
Yeah. Thank you, just to clarify.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
This is the first time you'll receive the money. They're sort of, sort of like the CPA, we're finally getting some money.
I, I think that they're doing it, so what I understand, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, the, that money is sitting now in our general account.
It's, yeah.
The state wouldn't allow.
What I was told was just sitting there.
Yeah, so we have, we have to actually.
They can't use it until we actually do this. Yeah, they can't expend it. So we have to accept that, make the appropriations to the, those people that are going to expend the funds. Revolving funds. I kind of, I forget which ones Mr. Erickson said. I think one was going to be about recreation. This, this actual, this article allows the town to establish and authorize, is the word, revolving funds for departments and agencies of the town. When, for an example, the library receives book fees, we have a revolving fund for that. When the DPW receives funds for trade-ins or something automobile that they put into the auction, that money goes into a revolving fund. And that actually helped us buy, buy vehicles, newer vehicles. This revolving fund. Jay, I'm sure Mr. Erickson can explain it better than I, but the current revolving fund is limited in the recreation department. It does not have to be, that does not have to be authorized each year. This revolving fund is broader so that it can be used for more, greater purposes within the, the recreation department. And I, that's, that's the extent of what I think I remember him saying during the show that we taped Friday. See how quickly we began things. And I don't know if it was the second revolving fund, but that's, that's the one I remember him mentioning. But the purpose of this article is, is to do that. If we wanted to change, which we don't, we're not going to, but if we wanted to change those existing revolving funds, we would actually have to do it, I think, under a separate article. So what exists, we authorize every spring, stays as it is, or it's not being changed.
Um, yes.
On the CPA is going to be getting funds soon if they haven't already. Where are they going? Are they going to be a revolving fund?
I don't, I don't think they're revolving, I think they're a special fund. And, yeah, you know, I, that's a great question to the town administration and, and maybe the select board members. I, I don't, I don't exactly know. He answered that, that's a great question. Next one is the personnel classification plan. I love this one. Every time I put in the consent agenda, somebody stands up. That person's here in the room. So I'm not putting it in the consent agenda, even though there are only, there are some minor changes. There's always something happening in this because the administration wants to classify its, its workforce in a manner that it best suits the operation of the town. The planning, the personnel board, at this point in time, has to approve those changes. And then it has to be. And then it has to be authorized or qualified by town meeting. So it's it's a labor, in my opinion, it's a labor process. But just think, the town administrator thought this through. Likely, he's presented to the select board, he or she. Presents it to the select board, then goes to the personnel board and it gets reviewed and reviewed and approved. And it comes to town meeting. Um granted, we all have opinions and that's fine. Um and they, and sometimes there've been mistakes and and. Whatever, when when we've got the the plan coming to town meeting, but that's really all you're we're doing here. Is we're proofing and approving the organization that the administrator and the. Personnel board has already approved.
I I think I didn't quite understand that when I started asking all these questions, but uh.
Yeah.
What I did plead with the the FinCom to do is to explain what some of these titles are. There's administrative assistant. That several different administrative assistants for who, and then there's like program manager for program. So if if they just had it, but what some of these titles were, at least to take away a lot of the mystery to some of this.
So I used to, I used to tease Bill Lemme, I was former town administrator. Um when this article came up and I was the finance committee chairman at that time, they said, okay, what did you do the? The shell game with now? Uh because what what they did is they put the people in the right place. And they gave the folks in the. In the position, the new position, the appropriate title. And what he was, they were basically doing is move moving somebody in the right place of the organization. And then giving them the the appropriate title, because sometimes an assistant would then go to. Uh you know, a director or or a manager or a supervisor, whatever. And it 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 got very confusing. And of course, these are, these are folks that are non-union. So they're not, uh let's say, a structured. Uh I like to call it a structured workforce. Their workforce that is fitted to the organizations for which they work in. Um so you don't have frontline, you don't have supervisors, you don't manager, you know, the the ladder type of organization. That a union or a board of each other's.
Good. To add to that, I agree. I think one of the things in Martin to your comment about program manager. I think one of the difficulties is you have to create these buckets of categories, and yet we don't know if it's program manager for economic development, to program manager for HR. You know, there could be programs across different places, so while there might not be a specific need. I think what my observation of the town administration over the last couple of years, uh unlike ten years ago when I was serving was. I think people coming in too, uh where we can't necessarily meet somebody on money, we can meet them on title. And responsibility. And so part of its prestige and professional development, so the agility to do this and having more options when hiring is important.
Now, I want to say, before I get to the next article, I want to say something. It's kind of a little bit of a joke, but it's not. Um so you know, truth, truth is great, great for comedy. I hate. The M W R A.
So how do you really feel? How do you really feel? Don't hold back.
I see Article thirteen, I I when I, when I read this, I said, no, not again. Cause I remember when we actually started um. What's that? The Dover uh well. What's the name of that? I remember when they they first signed Elmag and we first signed on to the M W R A for sewer and water. And I knew it was gonna be a problem from the beginning. And I, there's just something about dealing with the M W R A. Uh that is is just, it's a, it's a. Uh un- unbelievable authority that has so many people in it, you can get lost. Um and it 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 has an authority that, once you give them. The power to do something and the authority to do something, isn't, there's no turning back. So it's it's important that we do make the the decision for this purpose. Now, what this is doing. And I'll tell you, if you want to learn about a good or see a great ex- explanation or presentation. You should see the the presentation that you folks saw at the Board of Selecting. Whoever did that, Bill Spratt, did he, did Bill put it together?
Yeah, he built it.
Yeah, that was excellent. So what this is, this is hookup for water. We never got our water anywhere but our own wells. This is a supplement, the supplement our water in the event that the select board has to shut down Elm Bag. Or they have to uh get water from another purpose or another PFAS happens. God help us, all right? Or um now you can hear him applying it, I should, but. That's, it's a good thing what we're doing. I hate the agency. So um.
This think they have their own zip code in Charleston.
I think they do. Well, I battled them on on rates for sewer, because at one time the. I'll give you the short of it. Boston was really, and Cambridge were given the the better hand. They would get, they, we we used to pay um our sewer rates based on population. And if you just think of Boston's population per volume of sewerage is not the number of people that live there. Uh cause during the day, everybody heads into Boston to work. So we ended up paying for Boston's damage, let's call it.
Does it look like Paul Carew's hand was up?
Oh, did Paul want his hand up?
I I did have a question, uh Frank, before you go on to fourteen, did you skip twelve uh about rescinding Article thirty-five? What what?
Oh, I did. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Um my eyes aren't as good as they used to be. Uh but that's the M W R A. Our Article twelve is an interesting one. We have a cap on hiring, the hiring age for police and fire. I believe it's thirty-five.
At the time of the hire, yeah.
Yeah, can't be older than thirty-five as a first time. Um entry into the police and fire department. Town meeting members might remember, we voted. For a specific person to waive that, and I think she was thirty-six at the time.
Didn't that fail?
What's that?
Didn't that fail?
Yes, yeah, because it, well, whatever. But if we vote this, it will lift that restriction so that the fire chief. Police chief in the select board. And town administrator can bring on people who may be ultimately qualified, but over thirty-five. Um I guess, and you folks probably heard it already, uh the hiring, what's that? Oh, my lovely, lovely guy. The hiring for for individuals in the municipal um personnel is really tough. Uh let alone in the, in the private sector. Thank you. Um so uh they need to do something to relieve themselves. And and be able to hire the qualified people, even though they're they're over thirty-five years old.
And I do see that Paul's hand is now up. So Paul, you just need to come off mute before you begin to speak.
Yeah, now my hand is up. Before I, I had a, I had a veteran on the phone, I talk with my hands. So that was my hand movement. So uh yeah, Mike, uh Mr. Frank, I have a question. And Catherine, uh culture is offending one of you. Now, when I was hired, I was hired by the uh. Uh Board of Select, Select Board. And I I heard. Uh bits and pieces about the change, possible probable change. Uh in the police chief, fire chief and controller who are hired also by the select board. Now, uh I think there's six positions. Uh select board members that are hired by you folks, I'm not sure. Uh inclu- including again, my position. And I'm already well above the thirty-five years old, so uh I was hired at fifty-seven, I think. But uh, but uh, is this an age thing? Is is I hear that right? Uh Frank, that they. That they recommending this so they can hire somebody, some somebody. Uh 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 thirty-five years old?
Yes, for police and fire.
Right, yeah. Okay, it's only police and fire, not not other positions in the town.
Okay, yeah. So my, 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 my position is not gonna ju- to to jump off to somebody else.
You can say it. They are, Paul, Paul, Catherine, I can say that, but you you say.
Let's reassure, thank you, folks.
Thank you, Paul.
No, it's a good part. It's actually a good question. Um. So now that we just jumbled up twelve and thirteen, we'll move on to fourteen. Actually, this next cluster of. Of articles, fourteen, I think through twenty-two are all zoning. And fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, uh the planning board is recommending uh no action. So I don't know if it's referral that they they're gonna prefer for no action. Um. These these three articles just need more work. Uh and uh. They're doing the prudent thing and saying, well, this is not, let's not perfect this, you know, last minute, the night before town meeting. Uh let's make certain we get it right. And uh they are, they ask that uh these be passed. So they will be in the consent agenda, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. But seventeen through twenty-two. Will be uh dealt with individually. And um. My understanding is limited, because I didn't, I didn't watch all of. Um these planning board meeting, but seventeen, eighteen and nineteen are are being proposed. Basically by the planning board. And they're changing, you know, certain uses in the schedule. If you remember the zoning uh 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 bylaws, we have. Uh areas or or districts that are in writing, which are in text. And then we have districts that are defined and the uses therein in those districts in like a matrix. In like a table. And what I, I believe I saw some some motion, uh not all of them. On seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. And it was seventeen and eighteen, excuse me. And those are, those are the matrix changes within the matrix that are gonna occur. So to see those things, I'll just point you where you can see those those nows. If you go to the finance committee agenda that we mentioned earlier. Or the finance committee is planning on printing it in the book, you will see the changes that are being. Uh proposed in red line and then in finished copy. There are a lot of them. Um so it. You know, it's not, it's not as easy to say, well, we're gonna move this this use over to a different district. Um it's. There are a lot of changes. My understanding is they didn't make any. Substantive change, substantive changes that would cause, you know, great change to anybody. Nor anybody's right to build in any of the districts, um except for in one. Which um. I know I'm gonna skip around. It was the highway use one. And that's the one that Jamie, um Jamie Erickson was proposing. I haven't seen the, I skipped nineteen. Uh nineteen is gonna be uh a motion if it does get come out on the special permitting process. Um everybody knows uh that um. I just saw Rick Darrow.
Yeah, you tested a question about the age that I maybe I misspoke.
Yeah. Is it thirty-two, not thirty-five? I thought it was thirty-five.
Article twelve state, oh, okay. For people able to read what that says, yeah.
They can read what it says.
Oh, do you remember? Is it thirty-two?
I thought it was thirty-five.
I thought it was thirty-five too.
Okay, I may be looking at an older version that came out last month from the Natick report. Never mind.
I'll look that up.
I'm doing the speed.
Well, maybe Natick report got it wrong too, but.
Okay, so nineteen, yeah, is a special permit process. Uh that the planning board goes through. There are gonna be some changes. I have no idea what they're, what they're gonna be. Um but uh they may be some of the substantive things that town meeting members would want to look at. I look at zoning as this is regulating what I own. And I want to make certain that I want to make a good decision about my property as well as my neighbor's property. And that includes industrial and commercial properties too, because this is the entire makeup of the town.
What, but my question is, this vetting of the all the zoning questions, it goes through the zoning board first, right? Or the planning board and the zoning board, don't they?
Planning.
Okay, but zoning doesn't get, well, they used to way, way back, that they took their initiative and did it. You might remember they, we used to have some fights on town media or with zoning and planning, but planning goes through it first. Okay, then the finance committee. And the select board usually has. May may elect to to say so, engage.
I don't know, maybe Paul, you all know this, but but multiple uh vettings and reviews of every little thing. Isn't that kind of grinding everything into a.
Yeah.
I think one of the big arguments, it's like a generalize, is this notion that for certain things, you have to go for a special permit. Which most towns have, which is called as right or by right development. So so one of the things we've struggled with as a town. Is to let go of the reins from the planning board a little bit and saying, look, we need better definitions and guardrails. Once we get those definitions and guardrails in place, we should have a more as right or by right development. Uh and like, that that I think is kind of the crux of it. Uh you know, we have very, we've, we've a lot of ways spot zoned over the years. We've kind of had these exceptions. We're really trying to kind of turning that corner now with Amanda and Jamie working together. We're gonna see a lot of zoning changes evolving over the next couple of years, I think, moving towards this. Because again, I think this is one of the things that stresses staff. You know, it's just we have to respond and you can only deal with them at a town meeting twice a year. So it does, when it it holds people up. Leads to multiple meetings, businesses in particular, but people too with their homes. You have to hire lawyers, architects, engineers. It's cost, it's time.
Very costly.
So part of the, this the sales pitch around doing these things, and I think what they're looking at with special permits is where can we start to say, look, our definitions are sound. Our zoning is sound, therefore we can allow them as we like.
Right.
I just want to say that Rick was correct. It's thirty-two.
Is it thirty-two?
Yeah, I was sore thirty-five. I just looked it up.
Go on, Rick.
It's thirty-two and for the original appointment, what that means is the first time they're hired in Natick. So they may have ten years experience somewhere else, but the first time they become a a Natick um firefighter or police officer. Um they no longer have to, uh they don't longer have a ceiling of thirty-two years.
You won a prize, Rick, but you have to be here in person to claim it, so unfortunately we'll have to give it away.
I'll take the prize.
So Paul, Paul Crew, you you no longer make the cut.
Yeah. Give the prize to Sally, please. Thank you. Article twenty um actually is, it was an interesting one. I I had some time and had talked with the. Jamie Erickson about this. If you uh. Go to where, if you know where the entrance to Camp Arrowhead is, and just pass that heading west, there's two commercial buildings. Um that property is, is not um highway one. It's 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 something else. I can't remember exactly what it is.
Industrial.
Is it industrial? It may be. So it's limited in the size and the type of building that could be built there. Um there was, we made some change on the first building to allow the first building to be renovated. But the, I guess the second building and a property in the rear of that um has been sold or is up for sale. And the owner of the property, who owns that first building, um wa- may want to make a campus-like change. Like like we authorized for um up the hill. Um where the is the old, I'm sorry, Boston scientific. Uh and we did that last spring, I think. So what this is asking is to place that same restriction or regulation. On those two, those three properties and three very small properties. That a a lots that are along Lake contiguous. So now I think it's, it's all um HM one.
It's not really placing restrictions, it's opening up the options.
Yes, well, I call them restrictions, because you know, it restrictions, limitations, you can. Permission, permits, what's permitted. Um you can look at it both ways, but I always look at restricted. Um, you can look at it both ways, but I always look at restricted. Um, so so it, yeah, it does do that, and it, I I think it's, it made sense to me because now you have all of the same limitation or 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 prohibis, what's prohibited, um, on those properties from from that road to Sven Street, so it's all the same now. And it does, and it helps the property on the route, too. That's the way I I, Jamie explained it much better, but that's how I understood it. Um, I spoke with, we, I had, uh, the attorney, Mr. Phillips, Attorney Phillips, in on article twenty-one. Article twenty-one is an article that that we actually saw last spring. Uh, but we could not take it because it wasn't filed correctly. This is three piece, three parcels, I believe. One is the old Natick appliance, you might remember that story. Um, and then there's two multifamily houses that are, that receive that on, on North Main. As you're coming out of town, they're just before the old, um, Natick appliance building. Uh, the stall wants, or the property owners, uh, want to redevelop that property and, uh, go to a mixed use. Um, let's say building the use of those properties, and this article will permit them to do that.
That's on the same side as Pizza Plus, but heading north is down.
So as you're heading north, it's on the west side.
Oh, yeah, the west.
Right. So you'll have, will have pizza, the, the, uh, auto shop, and then the three properties. Um, so I think, I think, and and even, even, uh, Mr. Attorney Phillips said, the planning board was, did have some comments during his, uh, interview or of, or hearing. And, you know, they would like to plan out all five properties from the bridge to the Natick appliance. But this, this is the question right now. And if you do all mixed use coming out, coming out of town, you know, that would be much like the gateway theory that we're using elsewhere, elsewhere, right? Um, that's all I understand, what I understand is being asked.
And I will say, I'm saying the planning board when he was hearing.
Were you?
Yeah, so what's interesting is I think they lost the ability to renovate Natick appliance. There's some brand code clause that because, yeah, vacancy for a certain period of time. So the urgency from the owner's standpoint was, can we get it rezoned now to take action? Unfortunately, I think it got caught up in the, you know, perfect is the enemy of the good. Uh, so we're gonna wait till the spring, I think he's gonna come back in the spring, I'm not sure. The the planning board split two to two on it because, not that they're against it, it was more about, is it a gateway zoning? Or is it a downtown mixed-use zoning? Let's get it right and do the whole thing. And I think there was a big debate around, look, if we put it in one of these things inadvertently, we could get up to fifty feet high across the street from residences, which to some people is not acceptable. But again, if this becomes a downtown area, we really have to think long term about that. So I think the planning board's doing the right thing and taking the long view. But the purpose for this one, as I recall, he might have said on his, on your show, Frank, was, uh, really to kind of allow it to happen sooner while these other things are happening. I think everyone's in general agrees it's just a sequence.
Did that, did that smooth things out to get the Willow Street, uh, parking for the CRT?
Oh, that's done.
I know, that's a done, right? So that's amazing, yeah, thirty? Totally serious.
Something like that, yeah, exactly. That was just on the street.
But I have, I have a comment about what you just mentioned, that, you know, we don't want another one mainstream happening because we can't decide on something else and and pontificate. So we either, we either have to decide what our town's gonna be and do it rather than look at these individual circumstances and and kind of plug and play, so.
I I agree, for for peace of mind, just to get.
It's a bucket bowl mine.
I think a hundred percent, and that's one of my motivations when I talk about governance, coming from an economic development perspective. But but I will say, uh, there was a meeting with a couple of major property owners downtown. Uh, Jamie and I sat down with them and started talking about what are some of the propositions? I'm gonna be working with the EDC to bring in more property owners. The dilemma that we've got in Natick Center, especially now, is the economy. Um, so banks aren't lending, developers aren't developing, getting people on reliable schedules are tough. And so there's this reluctance, and now you get into this, if we're putting housing in, which we all want, the imposition of some of it being affordable, more than ten percent being affordable, so we keep across the town our affordability line. When you start imposing affordability percentage on a private developer, it makes a project become not financially viable. So it's not that they don't want to do it, so we were starting to talk about things like, are there tax incentives? Are there state or federal programs? You know, if we lump this in and maybe relax restrictions, we're starting a process that will hopefully start to look at Natick Center specifically. It'll it'll apply elsewhere, but Natick Center is unique in the sense that we've got a lot of small private parcels. Everyone's kind of operated as individual for so long. And we don't have, for example, like in Welsey, they have, um, contiguous, uh, contiguous, uh, parking behind retail, uh, that the city was able to lease from private landowners. We only have pockets of that around here. So it really, it, we we can't get out of our own way in some cases. And then as we add housing, we have to think about how do we add parking for residents? Is it a shared thing like in Boston where residents get it from seven P M. to seven A M. and then it flips? You know, things like that, so we're just starting these long-term things. And again, with the staff that we've got, this is why I'm terrified, I don't wanna lose people that are part of this conversation. It's good stuff, but we're getting there.
Well, don't stop talking, because the next article is the one that's years on. Article twenty-two.
Notice how we just rolled.
And, uh.
Frank, I thought message, somebody had a hand, Peter, I was there, had a hand up.
Yeah, there was. I don't.
Peter.
Oh, in chat, yeah.
What Peter said. Peter Bolton.
Yeah, uh, Peter, you're on mute at the moment, I don't know if you would wanted to speak or not. Uh, Peter, you're on mute, well, we can't hear you. Uh, Peter, you're gonna have to come off mute. Yes, yes.
All right, uh, is it possible briefly, we could return to article thirteen?
Uh, yeah, I I do wanna be able to get through all of them in in Frank's amount of time, but, uh, did you have something quick to comment on that one, or?
Yeah, some years ago, I realized the absolute need of the, uh, community to back up its water supply. And in that regard, I researched the opportunity costs involved. Uh, for some reason, they didn't come up today. Uh, my last recollection is that they were enormous, to the extent the town would have to assume substantial debt. I mention this because, um, access to a secondary water supply, in my opinion, uh, noting PFAS and the cost of that a few years ago is absolutely essential to the town. And of all the matters before us, all the articles before us, perhaps article thirteen is the most, uh, substantial of all of them and the most costly. To the extent this group can recognize that and begin to background itself on the long-term implications of that and whether it's worth assuming the cost, which I believe it is, uh, I think we'll be better prepared to consider the matter in town meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Um, one thing I was gonna comment, kind of at the end of our session, in in previous preparations for town meetings, we've kind of had a a twofer, we've had Frank come and give a high-level explanation of what the warrant articles are about. And then we've had a second section where we've gone, we've gone back through the articles again, inviting, um, town meeting members or or residents to kind of lobby, you know, and speak in favor or against individual articles. Um, we may wanna do that, we we currently don't have a speaker lined up for the the day before town meetings start, so we can revisit that later. And then, Peter, if you'd like to speak more on that at that time, we'd we'd love to hear it, so.
We'll have somebody for next week, though, uh, talking about the charter and bylaws.
Yes, yeah, we do, yeah, all right.
We'll be talking about that in detail. You're right, the right, you set the right before town meeting, we have to have a schedule.
Let's, uh, continue then, thanks.
Paul?
You're on, article twenty-two.
Article twenty-two, uh, so very briefly, uh, we have in Natick, we do allow the permit called body art. And body art basically consists of tattooings, piercings, and some medical, uh, ink applications. Uh, we had a a business owner come to Natick Center, uh, but prior to signing the lease, went to town hall and said, is this a permitted use? She wanted, she's an esthetician and wanted to do, uh, medical, it was called permanent makeup and microblading to basically add features using the injection of ink. Town hall said, yes, that's a permitted use. She signed the lease downtown, only to find out later, it's only permitted in a very, very small part of Route Nine. Uh, because years ago, the town didn't wanna see tattoo parlors all over town. So, um, coincidentally, I met this, uh, business owner two days before the warrant closed. So, you know, being the doobie that I try to be, I brought the citizen petition forward, so as not to put somebody new to town through that process. Uh, and, uh, basically, the goal for this article is to expand the definition of body art to include some of these newer techniques. Uh, as I said, permanent makeup, microblading, and so forth. And also to expand its use to the downtown mixed-use zone. So this will permit this business owner to, uh, continue their business. Uh, and over time, this will, uh, hopefully be opened up to other commercial areas. It's just given the forty-eight hours, I wasn't really bold enough to think that we can change it everywhere at once without falling into a trap of mistaking something. So at the planning board, which supported this unanimously, as did FinCom thirteen to nothing, as did the select board four to nothing, I had to abstain because it's a personal, uh, citizen petition. Uh, so it's supported, it's just a matter of getting this sort of definition expanded and allowing use.
Excellent. Nice elevator speech. Uh, the rest of the articles, I think, are all citizen petition except for the charter and bylaw review. I think that's right. Twenty-seven, okay. The next one is a citizen petition, um, and it's a question with regards to, um, uh, resident safety or setting a standard on dead-end streets uh, when there's development and minimizing the number of residences, uh, that can be permitted. Um, I'm not gonna go into the the specifics of this, but I will say this about this article. Um, each article has to be filed with the select board. When a zoning article is filed by anybody but the planning board, um, a motion and a map needs to be included with the article when it's filed. That did not happen. Because what has to happen, select board has to refer a zoning article to the planning board. And then the planning board knows to hold the hearing, you know, that's essentially the warning that 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 they get to hold the hearing. There's no way that that could happen or be known by the planning board. Um, because select board said this was incomplete when it was filed. So, um, there's no positive action that can be made on this article because the, we have now have a rule that we passed a year or so ago. The conditions precedent have to be met so the town meeting can act on something. It's actually a town meeting, all right? So essentially, um, the only motion I'll allow under our, this article, uh, will be no action.
Wouldn't that be a good example where you could just not allow it to be presented? I mean, was the article officially properly presented?
Well, it was officially proper, it was it was properly presented to the select board, and they, in their wisdom, put it on the warrant.
Right.
Anything that's on the warrant, town meeting has to act on by our rules. But state statute says that this referral and hearing process has to go on for every every zoning, uh, question. So part of, part of the requirement to get to town meeting, um, is, I don't know, soil, it's not perfect. And it needs to be perfect, especially with for zoning stuff. Uh, because once it's reviewed, um, it'll get kicked back at us, no matter what we do. Even though town meeting could come up with a positive motion, um, well, I won't allow it because it's not for the condition present, I can follow in that rule. But if they could, they could vote this and it could go to the A G. and the A G. turn it general and just throw it back at us. So why?
Why? My question, why? Include.
Oh, yeah, so at that point, why go that far? So, but we do have to act at town meeting on everything.
Yeah, although there is an interesting proposal in the charter and bylaws, proposals that would allow this, uh, sort of special consent agenda to deal with things that aren't really ready for decisions.
Intrigued by that?
Yeah, I am.
Yeah, I like that. Uh, the more tools that town meeting can have, uh, to get through town meeting faster, the better. And that's one of those good things that, uh, we found worked well. Um, and now we're moving on. Next three articles, the charter and bylaw review, the committee articles. First one asks, can we continue? Because only town meeting can authorize the continuance of its committees. Uh, and C B R C is a, um, a committee at town meeting. Uh, and the following articles, uh, are going to seek certain changes to the charter and certain changes to the bylaws. Um, I stepped back completely once I said my piece about the things I I would like to see proposed at town meeting. And there are a number of changes in there that I'd rather have Paul Briesmer or one of their folks give you the the nitty down and dirty on on what's there, there's a lot there. And its motions, it it's one, here's a way it's gonna be presented, this is important. It's a little different now. We're gonna have a main motion that's gonna hit the floor. And essentially, it's gonna be a boilerplate. It'll say, it'll say, where town meeting authorizes a special act in those sections two through seven, I think, of the charter are affected by this, this act. But each, under each of those lines or titles, it's gonna be blank. What we will do is we will amend that that boilerplate with the things that town meeting wants to present to the general court. So for an example, if you wanna change the term for hiring the town administrator from, was it three years now?
Not less than three to more than five.
Right, okay, if they wanna change that, they, I think that's article five of the of the charter, it's either three or five. That is an amendment that will be proposed, that will be then amending the main motion. So what we're gonna do is go through a lot of amendments. So it it's, it's better than having one motion that is eight pages long.
Longer than that now.
Yeah, it's huge, it's huge. Uh, I think we all, when when I was asked, how would you like to proceed? It was like, rather than taking pieces out of it, we're going to what what we call divisions, uh, dividing the main motion, why not put the pieces into it? And by amending the main motion, you're actually inserting these pieces in the right place into the motion. And that way, one motion goes to the state. They don't have to see all these divisions and and changes, it's gonna confuse them. And even the, even the special counsel said, that's a pretty smart idea. And and he suggested, you know, get one motion and and present one motion to the to the to the general court, to the state.
Does this, does their work as presented here, does that represent a full look through the charter and the bylaws? Or is it just what they had to go through before town meeting?
It's only a partial look. Yeah, there's more. There's a couple of hot-button things that they're not dealing with right now. Um, I think a lot of their focus, uh, and you'll hear this in their report, uh, I don't wanna give away their their trade secrets. But, um, I I I think the surveys that were done by the government study committee and some of the commentary at town meeting and things like that was very helpful because it said, look at town meeting, take a good hard look at town meeting. That was one of the messages. The other message that, um, I think that was heard in consultation with the select board is that let's take a good hard look of the authority, appointing authorities. Is that let's take a good hard look of the authority, appointing authorities and the authorities of the individuals. And how better can we we formulate that so that. The town can be more efficient. And it's just now with, you know, we're now forty years after this charter was in the early eighties approved. And a lot of things have changed in municipal government. Why not take a good hard look and change those things that really need changes? And I think there's there's still a couple of looming questions about, uh what was it, the comptroller appointment is still kind of out there. What did you solve that?
I think we did.
Oh, you did. Well, then there was some dangling particles.
There were.
And and you know, that's fine. If if you can't do it right and you you need more time, do it, make more time.
In the case of the comptroller, that is more of just a separation or segregation of duties to make sure that the comptroller was not necessarily gonna be hired by the person that they might be studying. So it retains control under the select board just to give that firewall between.
But I know that there's gonna be a lot of of even more cleanup and and work to be done by the CBRC and they. Again, they really only focused on, I think it was article three, uh the town meeting art of. Article, the procedures of town meeting. Um and in the bylaws that is, so I think you see a lot of focus on that. And there are a couple of interesting ones uh that that's coming up through that, uh one that I actually propose. A change to make the change, not what they're doing, but I propose to look at it, look at it. And that is, how do we deal with, you know, closing debate? Big problem. Yeah, and then the dissolution of town meeting. You know, what if we already know that there's four articles that really are. You know, we don't, we don't, either town meeting doesn't wanna do them, or they don't need to be done. Um that that we've had articles that we've debated that, um we didn't have the authority to even debate. Uh to make a decision on, but uh you know, when when those things occur, you need to, you need to be able to take actions finally. So.
Before you continue, Frank, this is probably an appropriate point or time to point out. That next Tuesday, at a special Tuesday session of Coffee with a Purpose, we'll be having Paul Griesmer here. To talk specifically about the committee and everything they've been up to and are thinking about, so. Um so there'll be email reminders about that, but we'll be able to dive deeper in that area.
Er- erase everything that I've said and listen to Paul. I actually had Spark Kindness meets meets here Tuesday morning, so unfortunately, that'll be completely virtual. I won't have this space available to do the convening next Tuesday.
Oh, thanks for pointing that out, Paul. I meant to say that, yes. Remote only next Tuesday.
Saying like it's politically motivated, so that's a.
Alright. Uh so that's kind, that's kind of the the thousand foot level. Uh viewpoint of what's happening with the articles twenty five and twenty six. As as I think I probably um let it let you know, I I know some inside baseball on it, but um. I mean, I'd rather have Paul get it, tell you what is happening. And it's it's somewhat fungible still. Uh there's still a little bit of a moving target on it. Uh the roles and responsibility of the personnel board. Um I think that was the select board's article, wasn't it? That's not the driver.
Well, no, it's not theirs. It's the town administrator.
It's the administrative and. Yeah, right. I I'd rather have him explain, you know, him or or someone else explain the nitty gritty of it. But here's here's my my understanding of it. Right now, the the personnel board. Makes decisions about the personnel, final decisions. And they're not advisory. And it, and this essentially is gonna flip that around where where it's it. Where they're not advisory to the town administrator, the changes that are being sought will make them advisory. Even though I think they still have to be consulted and, you know, in personnel issues. Um there are times that the town administrator gets gets kind of locked in a box. And can't do something because it's it's got a consultant, it's gotta have personnel board approval. Or the personnel board issues have to go to town meeting. Is what my opinion or my my, the reason why I thought it was great we did the government study is it 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 kind of exposed. That we really needed to make changes in the way we actually did thing, you know, manage our our authorities like that. And this was one of the powers and duties of the town administrators that I I thought should be changed too, so I'm kind of glad to see it. Uh beyond that, I don't think there's any, that's I think that's simplest explanation.
Yeah.
That we can give on that one.
I mean, just as a theme, what you're covering here is, you know, I think the CBRC and select board are all in a fierce agreement that we wanna sort of delegate response. More responsibility to the town administrator. And Paul will explain this next week, so much so that they're actually changing the definition to town managers uh in in some of their articles. But the idea being, look, this is a a well-trained professional in place. And while we do want citizen input, we want to also make sure we're not in their way when trying to make important decisions.
Bear city council.
I'm not commenting.
Next, next article is on the same theme. Uh that is changing um appointment authorities uh from select board to. Uh town administrator or that will be town manager uh when the name changes. Uh and it's inclusive of uh comptroller, police chief, fire chief. Um and some other positions to within. But it's taking them also, and what, and Paul will explain this, out of. Part of the charter and plunking it into one section in the charter, so I think it's clear. You go to one place to find out who does what. Uh I think it was a wise move. Um so he'll explain the the moving target and. I shouldn't call it a shell game, but how the how the pieces are moving around. Um welcome back, Article thirty with the town seal. And I don't mean that it is to a poor pine, but. I hope that the discussion is more focused on this one. And understand that this is only talking about changing the seal and nothing else. And that this is gonna be very narrow because you only have one option. And that's the option of what is being presented in the motion. And that is an eighteen eighties or eighteen seventies seal, uh very simple. But yet, um that's all you can do. So the focus and the discussion should be very, very narrow. Um and this is just, you know, everybody has a right to opine and bring your shoes forward and uh Jeff Alderson uh. I think he's from recent three or four. Town meeting members.
Three.
Is it three?
I think so.
He's west, west side of town. Um yeah, Jeff was very articulate guy, as as, you know, very smart, smart guy and and has has. A real good message, or or has formed a net is message articulately and uh hear him out. Uh somebody has to say. And then vote conscience. Uh fair and safe reproductive and gender affirming care access uh bylaw. I haven't seen the motion on this.
That was gonna be my next question. Have you seen the motion?
I have not, and I think I I I heard, saw a draft. Um and I never, I learned the hard way, when I see a draft, I'm not gonna comment on it. Because things change greatly. Uh the draft is out of scope.
Well, he's already presented to the uh FinCon and it failed.
Right.
I I just, I haven't seen the final motion.
Well, the the draft that I saw, and I think, I think what the finance committee looked at. There are pieces of it that are outside of scope.
Outside the scope, okay.
Outside the scope of the article. Uh that's not speaking to the substance of it, I'm just saying, here's what the article says it's gonna do. Um and here's what you say you're doing. Um and one is, one is a little bit out beyond uh the actual action. They trim it down and make it so that it fits within the box, what the article says. Decide, you got it, you folks decide on it. Um I'm not real pine on the on the issue itself, it's not my my role. Um Cody Jacobs could, I would reach out to Cody or. Trevor.
Oh, Claudia Trevor, right?
Yes, um and speak to her. Uh so she's the the towns are in trouble with, or is it more of a state? Uh it it's it's such a big thing, right? It's.
I think the state is already voted.
We, these, these, this has already been approved by the state legislature, there is, there are state protections in place. And it's also the medical ethics board also looks at these things, so it.
I see, that's established.
That is established.
It's already established, right? So, you know, are we, are we belting suspender something that we don't need to? I I don't know the answer, but. I honestly don't.
I haven't heard um an instance of this being an issue in native. So I just, I keep asking for examples of where this would be applicable.
Right.
And I I get hypotheticals about what might happen. And so um we spend so much, in my personal can, we do spend sometimes. In town meeting, um debating things that are just.
Not our authority.
Not our authority, beyond the scope, taken care of by federal or state protections, or just. Illegal on its face, or or we'll have, how council say this is something that'll be rejected by a court.
I just don't understand how town by town, I think, like this could be down. So it's the the difference of of these things, and I think this is where it's missed. Pat, you brought up issues, you know, about the um the bags, why is it bad and whatnot, those are related to something that we can regulate locally. Through through our border health, through other boards, or we we can make statements and have bylaws on. This is something that if you have a bylaw or a statement, it it has no force.
Yeah, well, medical care is so regional now, it's like, it's not town by town, right?
It it's regulated by the state. It it it's it's something that is. Is is is, you know, something that is beyond what we can actually enforce. How can we, how can we enforce something like Cambridge one one time passed a law that they didn't wanna have any nuclear. Um uh weapons going through. Place i- in in their city, and that's great, but. How do you enforce that? And how do you do? Now, they do.
What do you do about the nuke that's already at MIT?
Yeah. Give her a chance to ask her.
Yeah, I just, I I might have missed it, but how did this get on the, how did this become an article if it's if it's not relevant to town government?
Any citizen can place um a question before town meeting, so long as they get ten signatures. And the select board is is really.
Obligated.
Obligated, thank you, to 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 put the question on the warrant. And town meeting, one, once it's on the warrant, town meeting acts, but the action that they may take may maybe totally, no. Sure, good question. I'm sorry, was it?
I was just suggesting we move on to article.
Oh, we got the last one.
Thirty two.
Three, two more.
Doesn't it go to thirty six?
Oh, thirty two, we didn't do that. And this is, this is one that I I don't know a lot about, but I remember. Uh family leave uh when I was, you know, employed uh by by Comcast. We had full family leave and that was uh by law, we had to have it. As I understand it, um and they don't understand, well, our employees, our our. Town employees do not fall into the FMLA Act. Um they may have in their contracts and agreements, something similar to it. Uh which which gives an appearance that they they have FMLA. But they don't fall into all of provisions of FMLA. This is introducing FMLA townwide. So that it is dealt with as though it was dealt with in in the professional side or or. Or the public side, because it's a public business. I really don't know the ins and outs of how this would be implemented. Um I don't know uh in uh you know, what the costs are. I know that. Uh Kat Monahan gave a great presentation, a thumbnail presentation. Uh with me, he was like a five minute overview. And then she was before the finance week. I don't think she went before you.
She did.
Did she? Oh, okay.
She did virtually.
I missed it then, yeah. Um I, I think it's a great idea, but I think in the in the scheme of things. There is, there are some consequences and moving parts that I think have to be.
Yeah, well, it's it's opening up contracts, so to your point of the CBA there in place, it's, there is a real cost of of exploring it. Again, this is one of these issues that the town tries to work around state law, around local laws to do the right thing. We've got the right thing in place. But to codify it this rigidly now opens up essentially every contract that's been signed right now. You go back and once you open up a contract, everything becomes negotiable.
But that doesn't make it bad.
It doesn't make it bad, but.
But there is a cost in it. Are we, are we fixing something that doesn't need fixing, right? The question.
So my question for this particular one was, um why haven't more progressive towns like city? Uh like Cambridge, like Amers, like Northampton, why has no other town, this has been a law for five years, no other. Town or city has adopted this. And one of the reasons I called the um. A friend who works in Cambridge for the state council is this very question is gonna open up every single contract. And that means that things that we weren't thinking we were paying. So what I've asked the um. Kat Monahan to do, and I asked Cody Jacobs to do this, is to sit down with the town administrator and figure out who's not covered. And how can we create a program for the people who don't have twelve weeks? So teachers have eight. This would give them twelve weeks paid that um paid family medical leave. So let's figure out, like, the clerical union doesn't have that. Let's figure out who those people are that are neglected and figure out a way to maybe write it into their benefit sheet. The the problem with that, though, is it's a lot more expensive when you. Than if we were to just do it townwide, because premiums would be so much lower. So I think, I think it's a great idea. I'd love to see it. I just, I need more data to figure out if this is.
Cindy, did you have another question about it or comment?
Same exact question. As before, how did, how did this get, who put this on?
Citizen, citizen petition by a um. Kat Monahan uh is is the lead sponsor and nine of the p- nine other or more. People sign the petition. Um and um that's how it got on there.
And I I don't know who Kat is, is she, is she um serving?
He's on the finance committee as well as a town meeting member, Chris in three, I think.
Okay, thank you.
What I think I used to call a nodding.
Cool. We have one more article to discuss.
One more article.
One more, yay! This is, this is another one of those um that it's being proposed by Mr. Scott. Citizen petition, and what Mr. Scott is proposing is to fix the tax rate, the property tax rate. Um if a person has lived in the town for twenty five years and. In the same home for twenty five or more years. I've lived in this town since seventy eight, the problem is I moved. Four years ago, so I'm exempt from this. Uh and and what I guess is, the thinking is is that. He wants to set a start a new class of tax payer um that freezes their property tax. Is it, I don't know if it's a twenty fifty or twenty sixty year, I don't know if that was very clear. And um I don't think there was any um age limitation or or anything like that. And there was no, no stipulation of whether it was a a trust or whether it was a a person or. Because we have our our property and trust, um whether that would be exempt or not too. So. I think there's a lot of question, I think the big question is, is can we, can you actually do it? And I don't, I think the first answer from Mr. Anderson was no.
I I think, I I don't remember how you have to go about it, but this is akin to California Proposition Eight, and that was one of the things that's really tough. We looked at this a while ago, about what can we do to help people that are longtime, you know, occupied. Um so I think the intent is very good, because what this does is it it minimizes the impact on people that have lived here a long time of. Very affluent, younger families coming in and raising the property value so high that your tax bill goes through. Which has already happened and is going to continue. Now, so things like this are a good idea, so very complicated. I think you're right. I think we have to go through a state process for this, and I'm not sure exactly what it is. The legislature has to adopt something for us to be able to adopt it, and I don't think that's been done.
It may use better legislation than I. I, I don't even.
Reviewed by town council.
Yeah.
I thought she said it was illegal.
It was illegal.
I thought that's what she said.
I think that's right, because I think the legislature has to be able to.
Yeah, I don't think we could do it ourselves. It has to be under that special legislation and, uh, special act, and I. Again, I don't know all the ins and outs. The FinCom does have, I think is putting up a pretty good write-up on this, and it will include. Uh, the information that Catherine mentioned with regards to the, um, illegal opinion. Um, and questions, uh. You know, you could ask anyone in town, Mr. Henderson, I, I have to say, I'm impressed.
He's amazing.
Is this guy runs our assessing department, knows his stuff. And I just know he's kind of a better, fat head, but. Uh, he does a great job and, uh, he's always been good when I've had a question, always available. My returns is called well, so I'll put a little praise in with the bosses here. So I, if you have a question about it, I would certainly, uh, inquire with him. At least that would be my go-to. So, um.
Stop sharing at this point, Frank, and I wanna thank you again, uh, for, uh, coming. I, man, we always appreciate this. It just, it really helps to, to walk through it, um. I guess I, I'd like to ask the group, so as I mentioned before, next Tuesday, Zoom-only special session. Uh, by Paul Griesmer on, uh, a deeper dive into the, uh, bylaws, uh, review committee. And then that leaves us one session before town meeting officially begins the night before, or the, the morning before. Currently don't have a speaker lined up, but by that time, to your point, Frank, the finance recommendation book will have been out and. But there'll be a lot more meat around some of these articles. In the past, we've had a session. Where we then go through them one more time and people can, you know, speak pro or con or, or just ask. Questions for further understanding. I, I guess I'd just like to ask the group at large, would you like to? To plan on doing that, um, on the day before? Um, I am getting one set of hands very close to me. Yeah, uh, Brentley, yeah, as well, okay. Really, you, you wanna say something as well, or?
I think that after next week, we probably will have more questions and it might really be beneficial.
Okay, so we will, uh, plan on doing that. I wanna thank, um, Catherine again for bringing, um. What looked to be very delicious food from what I could observe, uh, from a mile away, but. Yes, yeah. Does anybody have any, uh, further questions, comments, um, or should we adjourn? Wow, this is uncharacteristically quiet.
You can always email me, um, I, you know, you can find me. Unfortunately, uh, you know, I, I'm writing self-pated, so, uh, please, uh, uh, reach out to me and I'd be happy to help. With any individual questions, and I enjoy coming and I thank you very much for, uh, for your invite.
Well, thank you, and, and thanks for saying you enjoy it. Actually, that was gonna be the one other question I was gonna ask you. Not about this charter or, uh, warrant at all, but. Why do you keep doing it, Frank? You, you've been moderator for a while. You might have said something about maybe thinking about stepping down, but.
My first impression, I, I enjoy doing this, I've, you know, I've. Been involved for so many years, it becomes a way, a part of your life. Um, now that I'm retired, I have a little more time, which is kinda nice too. It's not as much as a, a chore as it was, uh, you know, years ago, but. I, I, I do enjoy this and meet some really great people. Um, and you get, you get to really meet your neighbors, which is not the easiest thing anymore, uh. Like it was when, when my, my kids, when first were in the town. So, uh, you know, you get to, uh, network and, and have, meet some fine people, fine folks.
Yeah.
So. Thank you very much.
Brentley, did you have another comment or?
I did. I have a question because I, I think about this a lot, um. And not because I think that you're ready to step down, but I think that you know so much. Frank, I'm just curious if you've ever like reached out to anybody to share. How you do what you do, so that there's like somebody else knowing it. Like, have you thought about mentoring someone or writing things down? I, just because you've been, you've been doing this for so long, I think that we would. We would all benefit from, um, some of your insights.
I'll, I'll share these two things with you, maybe three. Uh, when I've made a decision on a point of order or, um. You know, when somebody wants to reconsider an article, I've tried to write down why I did it. And kind of memorialize it, because it's, in, in that regard, when I make a decision like that at town meeting, it, it's setting a precedent. And I actually used those recently with a, a fellow that wanted to modify his motion. Um, and, um, recently, and that helped out greatly, so, yeah, I have that resource. Second, I have every document of every time, uh, since, uh, two thousand and seven. So, um, I, I, I've saved a lot of work that I did electronically for that purpose. And yes, I've reached out to other people over the last, uh, three years to see if they wanna take out, take over the helm. Uh, more often they not, they look at me like I have five heads. Um, but I think there are a couple of people that are interested. In, uh, being town moderator, and I'm more than willing to, uh, take the time to mentor them over the next year or so. Cause of reelection in, um, twenty-five, spring of twenty-five, and I, I actually don't intend to run, run again. I think.
I'm really glad I asked that question then, cause, cause that's a wow.
Well, you know, eighteen years doing one thing is a long time. And, um, I, I've enjoyed it, but, but yet let somebody else learn how to do it and, and also, uh, let the town evolve. Um, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, I'd wanna be the boat anchor. I'd rather be, leave something that, that's gonna be better. Better than the way, the way I found it, and it's gonna get better after I leave it.
And there are stabilizing influences, and I think that's the way we see you, but, uh, Paul, you had your hand up too, Paul Karu.
Yeah, I just wanna say, say a couple of things, uh, Frank, I, uh. Uh, I'm still working, Frank, you know, I'm working, I love my job. I love helping the people I deal with, and it sounds like you love doing what you do. And dealing with the people in town and getting to know the people in town, and I think it's, I think it's great. I mean, uh, every, every public appearance remote there, I meet new people and I. Meet new clients and I, uh, uh, I've been with you as, as a town meeting member. Listen to your expertise and, uh, as a town employee, and I just wanna thank you for your eighteen years of service. And hope, hope you run in twenty-five.
What do you want me to run from?
I'll talk, I'll talk to Shaileen.
All right, well, thank you all, um. Oh, maybe, yeah, certainly you could turn off recording at this point and, uh, enjoy the rest of the, uh, the week, everybody.